Good evening, everybody. I want to call the meeting to order, we have a quorum. I'm gonna start off this evening asking Paul Proventia, our Veterans Agent, to come forward with the Veterans Council for two reasons. He's gonna make a brief presentation in reference to the chair that's sitting here, and then the Veterans Council will do the pledge of allegiance for us. So Paul?
Well, I guess I don't have to announce who I am. In December of last year, the Selectmen of our town requested, at the request of the Rolling Thunder Motorcycle Club, they voted backing the purchasing of a POW MIA chair to be prominently displayed in the town hall lobby. The members of the Middleborough Veterans Council covered the cost of the chair in setting up the display. The Veterans Council had the chair personalized to also be a memorial for Sergeant, Army Staff Sergeant William M. Smith of Middleborough, along with the more than ninety-one thousand US service members that have not returned home from World War I to present. William M. Smith was one of fifteen Middleborough residents who perished during the Vietnam War and era while serving our country. He's our only Middleborough soldier from the war who has never returned. William Mark Smith was born in New Bedford on April 2nd, 1949. A sixteen-year resident of Middleborough and a Staff Sergeant in the United States Army, he was only twenty-one years old when he served in Vietnam and were missing in action while on patrol. He was serving with Company B, Third Battalion, Eighth Infantry, Fourth Infantry Division, when he was reported missing in action on March 3rd, 1969. A report stated that Smith, while with his unit about twenty-five miles east of the city of Cartom, disappeared after falling down an embankment. Members of the unit returned looking for him. Miscommunication from the front claimed that he had returned to the head of the column. It was later learned that he had been captured by the enemy, the North Vietnamese. Interviews with former US prisoners of that war in the spring of 1973 revealed that William had died while on the trail to a North Vietnamese prison camp. Three years after the incident, the United States Government declared him dead by hostile action. His body has never been found. He was the son of the late Mr. and Mrs. Richard Smith of Two Starred Avenue, a 1967 graduate of Memorial High School. The class yearbook, which includes a picture of him on page thirty-five, states, "Bill likes physical education and plans to be a future teacher in that field." William Mark Smith's name is listed on Panel Thirty W on line thirty-two of the Vietnam Veterans Memorial in Washington DC, and is also remembered on our War Dead Memorial in the Middleborough Veterans Memorial Park, along with being listed as one of our casualties on the Vietnam War monument. Also, in our Middleborough Veterans Memorial Park. So we're here tonight to dedicate this one more time. We had the formal dedication ceremony yesterday at our Memorial Day Ceremony at the Middleborough Veterans Memorial Park. So we presented this to the town on behalf of all the missing in action since World War I to present, and William M. Smith. Thank you very much.
Cancel it?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Two.
And next on the agenda, it's my pleasure to introduce a special guest with us, Middleborough's own Courtney Edelman. She also happens to be a neighbor of mine. I've watched Courtney grow up since she was really small. She was crowned Miss Massachusetts Outstanding Teen last month. She's a junior at Middleborough High and a longtime student at the Burtwood School of Performing Arts. Her community service platform is the Special Olympics. This July, she'll be competing in the America's Outstanding Teen Pageant in Orlando. Here singing the Sarsaparilla Banner is Courtney Edelman.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? In the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air gave proof through the night that our flag was still there? Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you, Courtney. Also tonight, as we've been doing for the last few years, we have Middleborough High School Student Council members in the hall with us tonight. They should all be wearing a black and orange yarn tassel on their sleeve. And they'll be doing the counted votes for us tonight. So thank you very much, folks, for the service that you give us at town meeting. Thank you for participating. At this time, I would like to recognize Chairman of the Board, Ellen Farley, for the purpose of making a couple of brief presentations.
This year, the Middleborough Town Report has artwork on it from two of our high school students in Middleborough. I'd like to recognize Alexa Cushing for her artwork on the front cover, and Ella Velez for her artwork on the back cover.
All right, thank you very much. At this time, I would entertain a motion to allow, as necessary, the following non-resident individuals to address town meeting. Charles Cristello, Town Manager; Stephen Dooney, Town Accountant; Lance Benjamino, Fire Chief; Joseph Silva, Water Superintendent; Christopher Peck, DPW Director; and Rosalie Weiss, Superintendent of Schools; Kathy Piattelli, School Department Business Manager; Ellen Driscoll, IDT Director; Jane Cutsey, Director of Economic and Community Development; Fran Cash Pack, Superintendent; Ruth Joffrey, Town Planner; James Harding, Facilities Manager; and Michael McKean of Castle Booze Architects; and Joseph Sullivan, Police Station Project Manager; and further, for approval for taking a voice vote first on those votes requiring a supermajority. I have a motion and a second. Do I have any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries. Just a few reminders before we begin. Does everyone have a copy of the articles in the budget book? If not, there's copies outside in the lobby. In addition, we'll be projecting once again budget pages and motions on the screen behind us here for your use. I would ask that you please turn off all cell phones and pages, and I'll do the same myself. As in keeping with past practice, a motion to amend must be in writing. This is for the record. You'll be given time to write it out if needed. To address the meeting, please go to a microphone and be recognized by the moderator. There are microphones at both the top of the aisles and one down here on the floor. Please state your name and address for the record. Debate and questions are healthy, but to maintain order should be directed to the moderator. And last, but not least, please maintain civility. Town meeting is not the place for personal attacks or derogatory comment. I hereby certify that the warrant for this special town meeting has been posted, served, and returned in a proper fashion by Bruce D. Gates, Chief of Police. With that, we'll proceed to Article One.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Pavadouris?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer from the Employee Fringe Benefits Department, number nine-one... Should I start over? I just heard the mic come on. I move that the town transfer from the Employee Fringe Benefits Department, number nine-one-nine, Health and Life Insurance Account, five-one-seven-four-zero-zero, the total sum of four-hundred-and-one-thousand-six-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars to supplement the following budgets and account numbers for fiscal year 2014. Department Town Accountant, Department Number One-three-five, Account Five-one-one-one-zero-one, Regular Pay, one-thousand-two-hundred-and-four dollars. Elections and Registration, Department Number One-six-two, Account Five-one-one-one-zero-eight, Officers, three-thousand dollars. Conservation Commission, Department One-seven-one, Account Five-one-one-one-zero-four, Regular Pay Clerical, two-thousand-four-hundred-and-forty-four dollars. Conservation Commission, Department One-seven-one, Account Five-four-two-nine-zero-zero, Sundry Expenses, two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-sixty-one dollars. Police Department, Department Number Two-one-zero, Account Five-one-one-one-two-six, Regular Pay Officers, five-thousand-five-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars. Police Department, Department Number Two-ten, Account Five-five-zero-zero-zero-zero, Medical Expense, three-thousand-five-hundred dollars. Sailor of weights and measures, Department Number Two-four-four, Account Five-four-two-nine-zero-zero, Sundry Expenses, eight-hundred dollars. And the DPW Highway, Department Number Four-two-two, Account Number Zero-one-five-two-nine-three, Snow Removal, three-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand-three-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. I further move that ten-thousand dollars be transferred from the Employee Fringe Benefits Department, nine-one-nine, FICA Account Five-one-seven-six-zero-zero, to the DPW Tree Warden Department, four-twenty-nine, Account Five-two-nine-five-zero-zero, for trimming trees. I further move that twenty-thousand dollars be transferred from the School Transportation Miscellaneous Department, eight-nine-nine, Minibus Drivers Account, Five-one-one-one-six-five, to the School Budget Department, three-hundred, Tuition and Other District Account, I further move that forty-thousand dollars be transferred from the School Transportation Contracted Department, nine-zero-zero, Homeless Transportation Account, Five-three-zero-four-zero-seven, to the School Budget Department, three-hundred, Tuition of the District Account,
I have a motion and a second. Discussion. All right, hearing no discussion. Article One requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries unanimously. Article Two.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Pavadouris?
I move that the town transfer the sum of seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars from the Employee Fringe Benefits Department, number nine-one-nine, FICA Account Five-one-seven-six-zero-zero, in order to pay previous year's unpaid bills, Account Number Zero-one-point-nine-five-one-point-five-one-five-four-zero-one-point-zero-point-zero. Pay to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, invoice number three-seven-zero-zero-six in the amount of six-hundred-and-fifty dollars, and invoice number three-five-six-three-five in the amount of one-hundred dollars, both in reference to the School Department, Account Three-nine-zero-point-five-three-zero-four-six-seven-point-four-two-two-zero-point-eight-nine-nine-nine-zero.
I have a motion and a second on Article Two. Discussion. All right, hearing no discussion on Article Two. Article Two requires a nine-tenths vote. So we'll try it as a supermajority first. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed signify by saying nay. All right, we're gonna have to count it, folks. Where are my counters? All those in favor, please stand and be counted.
That projector light got right in my eyes.
Yeah, me too.
I can't see a thing.
Yeah.
Looking good, Steve, looking good.
Hey, I like that little act you did out front with the little two-step. I wonder the trails were all wide.
You made his life. Actually, you didn't see him, nobody was pointing.
Section One. Section Two. Section Three. Do I have a count in Section Three? Thirty-three? Section Four? Section Five? And Section Six? Did we have someone counting the stage? Okay. All right, all those in opposition, please stand and be counted. Section One. Section Two. Section Three. Section Four. Section Five. Section Six. The count ends up being two-hundred-and-three in favor, none opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Article Three.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Pavadouris?
How about Mr. Farley?
Okay, oh, I'm sorry. We'll get it right tonight.
I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of six-thousand-five-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars from the Employee Benefits FICA Account, number Five-one-seven-six-zero-zero, to fund sick leave buyback in the following departments. Police Department, number Five-one-nine-seven-zero-zero, in the amount of six-thousand-five-hundred-and-six-six dollars.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion on the motion.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Farley.
This article funds the sick leave buyback for one retiring town employee.
Thank you. Further discussion? All right, hearing none. Article Three requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries unanimously. Article Four.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Alpie.
I move that the town vote to transfer thirty-six-thousand-one-hundred dollars from the Employee Benefits FICA Account, number Five-one-seven-six-zero-zero, for the purpose of reimbursing retired town employees and other persons enrolled in the town's Medicare health insurance plans for some of the health insurance premiums and copayments paid by the said retirees and other persons after fiscal year 2012, and to pay any related costs.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Alpie.
When the Board of Selectmen voted to change health plans two years ago, the savings from the Medicare plans were based on projected rate increases. The rates actually were lower than the projections, thereby generating more savings. This article will fund additional premium reductions for retirees and other Medicare health insurance plans in accordance with the agreement signed with the Public Employee Committee.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, hearing none. Article Four requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries unanimously. Article Five. Mr. McKinnon.
I move that the town vote to appropriate our reserve from Community Preservation Fund annual revenues in the amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for the committee administrative expenses, debt service, community preservation projects, and other expenses in fiscal year 2014, with each item to be considered a separate appropriation. Reserves from 2015, estimated revenues for historic resources, reserve, six-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty-eight dollars. From fiscal year 2015, estimated revenues for community housing reserves, six-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty-eight dollars. From fiscal year 2015, estimated revenues for open space reserves, six-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty-eight dollars.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion.
This... Mr. Moderator, this...
Go ahead, Mr. McKinnon.
This is proposed by the Community Preservation Committee. The Board of Selectmen recommended favorable action on Article Five.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, hearing none. All those in... Articles... Yes. This article requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries unanimously. I would now entertain a motion to dissolve this special town meeting. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed signify by saying nay. Thank you. The special town meeting is now dissolved. We got four minutes to go, folks, until 7:30, at which point in time the annual town meeting was posted. So we will go into recess for four minutes. Please stick with me. Folks, it being now 7:30, and a quorum being present, the annual town meeting will now come to order. I hereby certify that the warrant for the annual town meeting has been posted, served, and returned in a proper fashion by Bruce D. Gates, our Chief of Police. On Article Two, the budget, the procedure we'll follow tonight on the budget article is as follows. And please follow along with me, and particularly if you haven't been here for a while. The Finance Committee will introduce a motion on each individual category and/or department, followed by a second, which will be indicative of their collective recommendation to this meeting. I will allow a slight pause after each motion. If anyone desires discussion or amendment, simply call out "hold", and that department will be set aside for further discussion. At the end of the article, I'll entertain a motion to appropriate the amounts recommended by the Finance Committee for all items not set aside. After that, I'll revert back to all items set aside and take them up in order for discussion, possible amendment, rejection, or other disposition. Does everyone understand? Okay? I will entertain a motion to... No, okay, that's where we're at. My notes sometimes get a little bit carried away here. Just stick with me here. Okay, Article One. Is there any group that has a report to file with this town meeting? I don't believe there is. Okay, seeing none. We'll move right on to Article Two.
Mr. Moderator.
Go ahead.
I move that one million...
Can you pull the microphone down? Now pull it down so you can speak into it. Oh, there we go, okay.
I move that one million-six-hundred-ninety-eight-thousand-fifty-three be transferred from the sales of water to the fiscal year 2015 general fund budget. And six-hundred-ninety-six-seven-hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand be transferred from the sales of the wastewater to the fiscal year 2015 general fund budget. Also, one million-nine-hundred-and-fifty-eight-thousand-seven-hundred-and-forty-four be transferred from the sales of gas and electric to the fiscal year 2015 general fund budget. Also, four-hundred-and-twelve-zero-twenty-nine-thousand be transferred from the revenues of the Trash Enterprise Fund to the fiscal year 2015 general fund budget. I move that three-hundred-thousand be transferred from the Council on Aging Trust Fund to Department Five-four-one, Council on Age Budget. I move that two-hundred-and-forty-thousand be transferred from the Debt Stabilization Account to Department Seven-one-zero, Debt Services Budget. I move that one-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand-seven-hundred-and-thirty-three to be transferred from the Water Pollution Abatement Trust Account to Department Seven-one-zero, Debt Services Budget. I move that the town raise and appropriate by taxation or available funds... Sorry. There we go. I move that the town raise and appropriate by taxation or available funds in the Treasury the following sums of money for the operating budgets of various departments of the town for fiscal year 2015, beginning July 1st, 2014, as presented in the Finance Committee Budget Book as follows. Town Accountant, Department One-three-five, one-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-four-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars. Yep. Sorry, I'll go by page. Reverse that. Finance Committee, Department One-one-one, for a total of four-thousand-eight-hundred-and-ninety dollars.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Go ahead.
Selectmen, Department One-two-two, sixty-two-thousand-nine-hundred-and-fourteen dollars.
Second.
Okay.
Town Manager, Department One-two-three, two-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand-nine-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars.
Second.
Okay.
Town Accountant, Department One-three-five, one-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-four-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars.
Second.
Okay.
Assessors, Department One-four-one, two-hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand-eight-hundred-and-ninety-six dollars.
Second.
Okay.
Treasurer and Collector, Department One-four-five, four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-one-hundred-and-ninety dollars and twenty-two cents.
Second.
Okay.
Law, Department One-five-one, one-hundred-and-forty-three-thousand-five-hundred dollars.
Second.
Okay.
Information Technology, Department One-five-five, two-hundred-and-forty-three-thousand-twenty-four dollars.
Second.
Okay.
Town Clerk, Department One-six-one, one-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand-seven-hundred-and-four dollars.
Second.
Okay.
Elections and Registrations, Department One-six-two, sixty-eight-thousand-five-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars.
Second.
Okay.
Conservation Commission, Department One-seven-one, one-hundred-and-eleven-thousand-six-hundred-and... Conservation Commission, Department one-seven-one, one hundred and eleven thousand six hundred and seventy-three dollars and forty cents.
Second.
Okay, I have a hold on conservation. Okay, go ahead.
Planning Board, Department one-seven-five, one hundred and ninety-eight thousand four hundred and ninety-four dollars and fifty-two cents.
Second.
Okay.
Zoning Board, Department one-seven-six, thirty-one thousand ninety-nine dollars and five cents.
Second.
Okay.
Administrative Office Building, Department one-nine-three, one hundred and forty-five thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars and twenty-four cents.
Second.
Okay.
Police Department, Department two-ten, three million six hundred and forty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-six dollars and ninety-six cents.
Second.
Okay.
Fire Department, Department two-twenty, two million six hundred and seventy thousand six hundred and ninety dollars.
Second.
Okay.
Building Department, Department two-forty-one, three hundred and forty-one thousand eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars.
Second.
Okay.
Sealer of Weights and Measures, Department two-four-four, six thousand two hundred and eleven dollars and twelve cents.
Second.
Okay.
Animal Control, Department two-nine-two, one hundred and nine thousand nine dollars and sixty-six cents.
Second.
Okay.
DPW Administration, Department four-two-one, fourteen thousand six hundred and seventy-eight dollars.
Second.
Okay.
DPW Highway, Department four-two-two, nine hundred and ten thousand nine hundred and ninety-three dollars.
Second.
Okay.
DPW Tree Warden, Department four-two-three, twelve thousand four hundred and eleven dollars.
Second.
Okay.
Health, Department four, five-two-one, three hundred and seventeen thousand nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars.
Second.
Okay.
Council on Aging, Department five-fourty-one, three hundred and sixteen thousand fifty dollars and eighty-four cents.
Second.
Okay.
Veteran Services, Department five-fourty-three, five hundred and eighty-two thousand one hundred and forty dollars and seventy-four cents.
Second.
Okay.
Library, Department six-ten, five hundred and seventy-three thousand three hundred and thirty-nine dollars.
Second.
Okay.
Park Department, Department six-fifty, two hundred and seventy-seven thousand eighty-nine dollars.
Second.
Okay.
Historical Commission, Department six-nine-one, one thousand six hundred and one dollars.
Second.
Okay.
Debt Services, Department seven-ten, three million five hundred and sixty-four thousand one hundred and forty-four dollars.
Second.
Okay.
Employee Fringe Benefits, Department nine-one-nine, twelve million nine hundred and eighty-three thousand three hundred and twenty-seven dollars.
Second.
Okay.
Unclassified, Department nine-fifty, three million two hundred and fourteen thousand eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars.
Second.
Okay.
Transportation Miscellaneous, Department eight-nine-nine, eight hundred and three thousand four hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
Second.
Okay.
Transportation Contracted, Department nine-hundred, one million eight hundred and seventy-eight thousand four hundred and twenty dollars.
Second.
Okay.
School, Department three-hundred, twenty-eight million seventy-three thousand three hundred and forty-three dollars.
Second.
All right, I have a hold on school. Okay, go ahead.
Wastewater Department, Department four-four-zero, one million eight hundred and ninety-three thousand four hundred and three dollars.
Second.
Okay.
Water Department, Department four-five-zero, three million six hundred and one thousand two hundred and twenty-nine dollars.
Second.
Okay.
Trash Disposal Enterprise, Department four-three-three, one million forty-eight thousand two hundred and seventy dollars.
Second.
Okay. With that, I will entertain a motion to appropriate the amounts recommended by the Finance Committee for all items not set aside for discussion. We have two set-asides, one being Conservation Commission and the other being schools. We'll, after we take this vote, we'll get back to those. Um, this article requires a simple majority vote, but I would entertain the motion first.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any further discussion?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, Mr. Pavidori.
Just as a clarification, I just want to make sure, uh, on page twenty-eight, the COA Council on Aging Budget...
Yep.
The budget should be six hundred and sixteen thousand fifty dollars and eighty-four cents. With the offset, it brings it to the three hundred and sixteen thousand fifty dollars and eighty-four cents. But the budget itself is the five sixteen, uh, six sixteen number, I'm sorry. Six hundred and sixteen thousand fifty dollars and eighty-four cents.
Thank you for that clarification. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
And those opposed signify by saying nay. All right, that part of the budget passes unanimously. Now we will go back to the first hold, which is Conservation Commission. You can. For those of you who are ho, calling out there, Deborah Kirsch, who's a member of the Conservation Commission, has asked to make a quick presentation, so uh, bear with us just for a minute while she gets it on the screen. Can I have this mic down here, please?
I am now? I think it's on now. Do I have to hold it to talk? No?
Have we got this mic?
It's on. There we go.
There we go, okay, thank you.
So, thank you, Mr. Moderator. I am Debbie Kirsch, Vice Chair of the Conservation Commission. Thank you for allowing me to speak today on the commission's behalf. First, I want to start, start off by saying this proposed budget is not level funding. It is not even a small reduction. It is a cut of thirty-eight percent of our clerk's hours. We have needed additional hours by our clerk for fifteen years and have been paying for the, those additional hours through our wetland filing fees account. We are not increasing our clerk's hours from twenty-two and a half to thirty-six and a quarter hours per week. She has been working thirty-six and a quarter hours per week for seven years. We're asking that, that this now be funded through the town budget as our supplemental source, the wetlands filing fee account, has been exhausted. In fact, we have reduced our clerk's hours on April twenty-first to thirty hours per week, so we didn't run out of funds on May tenth, leaving us with no clerk for the rest of the fiscal year. Your vote earlier tonight will assure our ability to function for the rest of this fiscal year. Thank you all for that. Tonight, I will address two points. The duties of the Conservation Commission, and in particular, our clerk, and then the impact of this additional funding if, is not approved. Our clerk spends her time in both main components of the Conservation Commission's duties. First, the Conservation Commission itself was created in nineteen sixty-two by a town mo, meeting vote just like this one to protect our open space and manage some public lands. At this time, the commission oversees more than eleven hundred acres of land and water bodies between properties owned and properties that contain conservation restrictions. We also seek ways to increase the amount of land protected in our town through conservation restrictions and land donations. We've been involved in many joint ventures with organizations such as Wildland Trust, the Nature Conservancy, and Buzzards Bay Coalition to protect additional land. And we create and maintain documentation necessary to address the questions and concerns of the pub, public, such as the Open Space Plan, which is required to apply for many grants, or providing information needed by other town departments such as the Building Department, the Board of Health, DPW, and the Planning Department. Since nineteen seventy-two, the Conservation Commission has also been charged with administering the Wetlands Protection Act and is legally obligated to fill this task. Any activity that disturbs the earth and is within one hundred feet of a wetland or two hundred feet of a river or stream may need to come before the commission. This permitting process allows us to protect the wetland resources area so they can do the job they were intended to do, such as protect the water supply, prevent flooding, and maintain habitat. In order to fulfill this obligation, the commission has long since needed the assistance of a full-time clerk. There's a tremendous amount of work that is generated from our office. On average, over a hundred and fifty proposals come before the commission, generating a hundred and sixty-eight site visits and seventy-three permits per year. Every hearing requires agendas and minutes to be generated, state guidelines to be followed, publicity confirmation notifications, and addressing the needs of the public, the applicant and/or the others. Every permit or certificate also has administration requirements. Signatures, record-keeping, state requirements, and notifications. There are also the regular requests from the public. We often have a number of ongoing issues that are of great interest to the public, generating calls, visits, and requests for information. Some have to do with public health, such as Rockland Industries Site, the Brickyard, and the Field of Dreams. Others have historical significance, such as the J-Mar Turkey Farm and Oliver Mill. Again, the monies we are asking for under the additional funds are not truly additional. We have been expending those funds for fifteen years, but have not needed the town's assistance to pay for it until now. If these funds are not approved, it will have a huge impact on the job the Conservation Commission does. First, the office will not be able to be open five days a week from eight AM to five PM as it is now, affording the opportunity to the public to get the information they need or to report an emergency situation. Cutting our clerk's hours by thirty-eight percent would force the Conservation Commission office to focus almost completely on the Wetlands Protection Act, so we have a legal obligation that has to be fulfilled. Our agent would also likely have to shift some of her focus to some of the administrative duties that our clerk normally fulfills in order to meet state requirements. This would further reduce the amount of time the office could respond to public requests, manage the town's conservation land, and pursue additional joint ventures to benefit the town. While we appreciate the town's financial situation, the Conservation Commission has carried part of the financial burden of running our department for as long as we could. The town has reaped the benefits of all the work the commission has done. We now need the town to step back in and fully fund the needs of the Conservation Commission. Thank you.
Do you want the amendment now?
If you have it.
I move to amend, uh, the Department one-seventy-one budgeted amount to one hundred and thirty-six thousand three hundred and seventy-two dollars and forty cents.
Do you have a copy of that, Deb? Okay, folks, we have a motion and a second to amend the Conservation Commission, um, Department one-seven-one budget from one hundred and eleven thousand six hundred and seventy-three dollars and forty cents to one hundred and thirty-six thousand three hundred and seventy-two dollars and forty cents. I'll open it for discussion.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Cristole.
Mr. Moderator, um, we made significant budget cuts in three fiscal years. Fiscal year ten, fiscal year eleven, and fiscal year twelve. Uh, every single department was impacted by those cuts, and to this day, um, all those departments on the town side are still operating under those cuts. And we lost, um, a number of employees. Some departments, as in this one, uh, lost parts of employees. And they've all done their very best to provide the very best public service uh, under those restrictions as they possibly can. Um, we've been averaged, we've managed to balance the last three budgets. Uh, we're here tonight with a balanced budget. Um, but those three balanced budgets were accomplished by making significant reductions in our health plan in two out of those three fiscal years. We're not out of the woods yet. And it's been the joint determination of myself, uh, the Board of Selectmen, and the Finance Committee that we have to maintain our level funding, uh, through this fiscal year in order to make sure we can bu, balance budgets going out into the future. Uh, it would be grossly unfair to those departments that have been, uh, doing their very best within the limitations we give them to fund one single department, uh, at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. We'll vote on the amendment first. Um, the amendment, does everybody understand the amendment? A, a yes vote will mean that that budget figure will go up to the proposed one hundred thirty-six thousand three hundred and seventy-two. A no vote will maintain it at the recommendation of the Finance Committee. That being said, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed signify by saying nay.
Nay.
All right, I, I have a question in my mind, so we're gonna count it. Um, all those in favor of the amendment, please stand and remain standing until counted. Section one. Section two. Section three. Section four. How many? Section five. And section six. Okay, all those in opposition to the amendment, please stand and be counted. Okay, section one. Section two. Section three. Section four. Section four. Section five. And section six.
Nine.
The vote is fifty-nine in favor, one-hundred-and-fifty-six in opposition. The amendment fails. I will now entertain a motion to appropriate the amount recommended by the Finance Committee, as stated.
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? Go ahead. Could you identify yourself, please?
John Hapistras, Spruce Street.
Thank you.
The motion asks for a million six from water, six ninety-six from sewer, and four-twelve from trash. I believe those were enterprise accounts for the maintenance, at least the water and sewer were enterprise accounts to maintain the water and sewer lines, not to fund the town. Can somebody address that issue for me, please? The rate pay is being overcharged as a piggy bank for the town?
Somebody wanna answer that, please? Go ahead, Mr. Cristolo.
These are amounts that the town pays through its operating budget for the benefits of the employees, the water, wastewater, and trash departments. So those enterprise funds pay for those benefits, and the transfers occur into the general fund because the amounts for those benefits and for debt service and for other items that are used by those departments are budgeted in the general fund.
Okay, so this is monies that are used to support the water, wastewater, et cetera?
Solely.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion as presented by the Finance Committee signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries unanimously. All right, the next hold is the School Department. And speaking for the School Department is Ms. Rosely Weiss, our Superintendent of Schools, folks.
Thank you, I don't need to introduce myself then. Thank you very much for permitting me to speak this evening. Superintendent of Schools, I share with you and oversee the needs of your school district. The school district is one of many town departments. We are all requiring funding to put forth our best effort for the town of Middleborough. We have sent a pamphlet to each household this spring to explain the needs of the school district and to provide information to residents before they were coming to town meeting this evening. This year, our requirements exceed the amount of money provided to us from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. We are receiving from the state only twenty-five dollars more than last year for each student. The town of Middleborough has given us additional money to cover unexpected costs, and we are appreciative. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education is requiring many initiatives this year and in the years ahead. Those will continue. Education today requires positions not formally found just a few years ago. Much of the requirements are for increased data to be supplied to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education by each school district. We have requested personnel to assist in guiding our staff members and to provide data to the state. We need some positions restored, and we need new positions to input data, analyze data, and assist us in using this information to prepare curriculum and instructional lessons. We realize that our budget request is more than the recommended amount allotted by the Finance Committee. Therefore, for the fiscal year fifteen, school year, we will work within the Finance Committee's recommended budget and continue our best efforts. Thank you, and thank you to the committee for its allotment.
Thank you. Ms. Cedarholm.
My name is Sarah Cedarholm. I am the chairman of the Budget Subcommittee for the Middleborough School Committee. Under the recommendation of Dr. Weiss, our committee would also support the budget put forward by the Finance Committee and by the selectmen. We appreciate the continued support and effort to close the gap between our needs and the funds that are available. We ask that as we move forward in the future that we continue to work together in addressing and creating a long-term solution to this constant deficit for our students as we continue to advocate for the needs of our students and attempt to provide them with the best education of which they are certainly deserving. So thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. I'll entertain a motion to appropriate the amounts recommended by the Finance Committee for the Department, by the School Department budget.
So moved. Second.
I have that motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? The ayes have it. It passes unanimously. You have just passed a complete balanced budget, folks. Thank you. Article three.
Well, Mr. Moderator, there's still some more on Article two.
Oh, go ahead.
Sorry. I move that the town appropriate from the wastewater department receipts the operating budget of the wastewater department, four-four-zero, the total sum of one-million-eight-hundred-ninety-three-thousand-four-hundred-and-three dollars minus the indirect costs of six-hundred-and-ninety-six-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars appropriated in the general fund.
Second.
You're gonna move on?
I move that the town raise from the water department receipts the operating budget of the water department, four-five-zero, the total sum of three-million-six-hundred-and-one-thousand-two-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars minus the indirect costs of one-million-six-hundred-ninety-eight-thousand-fifty-three dollars appropriated in the general fund.
Second.
And I move that the town raise from the trash disposal departmental receipts the operating budget of the trash disposal department, four-three-three, the total sum of one-million-forty-eight-thousand-two-hundred-and-seventy dollars minus the indirect costs of four-hundred-and-twelve-thousand-twenty-nine dollars appropriated in the general fund.
Second.
Seeing none, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion's carry unanimously. Now we have completed the budget. Thank you. Article three.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Stewart.
I move that the town vote to transfer from the income from the sales of gas and electricity, six-hundred-ten-thousand-eight-hundred-ninety-one dollars, to the assessors for the purpose of fixing the tax rate for the fiscal year two thousand and fifteen.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Stewart.
This article appropriates the amount contributed annually to the town by the Middleborough Gas and Electric.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, seeing none. Article three requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries unanimously. Article four.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Knowlton.
I move that the town vote pursuant to section fifty-three E and a half of chapter forty-four of the General Laws, as amended, to authorize and/or reauthorize establishment of the following revolving funds for the purpose of funding certain activities and operations of certain departments and programs of the town during fiscal year two thousand and fifteen. Program municipal fire alarm system, the expending authority would be the fire chief, sourced from fees not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars. Hazardous materials, incident training and materials under the fire chief, fees not to exceed fifty thousand dollars. Recycling program under the Public Works Superintendent, sources fees not to exceed two thousand five hundred. Compost bin programming under Public Works, fees not to exceed two thousand five hundred. Herring fishery program under the Herring Fishery Commission, fees not to exceed ten thousand dollars. Recreation and sports program under the Park Commission, fees not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars. Zoning map, bylaws, and subdivision rules and regulations under the town park, fees not to exceed two thousand five hundred.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Knowlton.
These revolving funds have to be reauthorized annually at town meeting.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Pavadouris.
The Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Thank you. Any further discussion? This article requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries unanimously. Article five.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Farley.
I move that the town vote to appropriate one-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand-nine-hundred-ninety-two dollars from taxation to the appropriate line items in FY two thousand and fifteen budgets, as established by the town accountant, to fund the following collective bargaining agreements. General Municipal Employee Group, thirty-seven-thousand-four-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars. Middleborough Professional Firefighters Association, forty-five-thousand-seven-hundred-and-sixty dollars. Middleborough Clerical COA Union, twenty-thousand-five-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars. AFSCME Council ninety-three, Local one-seven-zero-zero, in the amount of eighteen-thousand-one-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars. I further move that the town vote to appropriate thirty-five-thousand-six-hundred-and-sixty-three dollars, of which seven-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars is from the wastewater enterprise unreserved retained earnings account. Thirteen-thousand-two-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars is from the water enterprise unreserved retained earnings account. And fourteen-thousand-four-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars is from the trash disposal enterprise unreserved retained earnings account to the appropriate line items in FY two thousand and fifteen budgets, as established by town accountant, to fund the following collective bargaining agreements. General Municipal Employee Group, six-thousand-eight-hundred-and-twelve dollars. Middleborough Clerical COA Union, two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars. AFSCME Council ninety-three, Local one-seven-zero-zero, in the amount of twenty-five-thousand-nine-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars.
Second.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Farley.
The town recently reached one-year agreements with four unions for a two percent cost-of-living increase for FY fifteen.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All right, hearing none. Article five requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed signify by saying nay. The motion carries unanimously. Article six.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Dophie.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of four-hundred-thousand dollars by borrowing from the Massachusetts Water Pollution Abatement Trust pursuant to General Laws, Chapter twenty-nine C, for the purpose of funding the town's program to repair, replace, or upgrade septic waste disposal systems.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Dophie.
This article authorizes another round of borrowing to continue the septic system improvement loan program administered by the Board of Health.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Pavadouris.
The Finance Committee recommended favorable action on this article.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Article six requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries unanimously. Article seven.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. McKinnon.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate eighty-thousand dollars from taxation for the purpose of reimbursing town employees and retired town employees and other persons enrolled in the town's non-Medicare health insurance plan for some of the increases in health insurance, HMO, and PPO co-payments paid by said employees and retirees and other persons in excess of the amounts of such co-payments applicable during fiscal year two thousand and twelve and pay any related costs.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. McKinnon.
The Board of Selectmen voted to change health plans this year to the State Group Insurance Commission, saving over nine-hundred-thousand dollars. This article will fund the portion of the reimbursement of some of the co-payment increases associated with the new plan. In accordance with an agreement signed with the Public Employee Committee, the remainder of the funding will come from the future town meetings.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Pavadouris.
The Finance Committee voted favorable action on this article.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Article seven requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed signify by saying nay. Article carries, motion carries unanimously. Article eight.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Stewart.
I move that the town vote to, number one, rename the police station building study committee to the police station building committee. Number two, empower and authorize said committee to do everything necessary and desirable to rehabilitate and construct additions to the police station, including but not limited to the employment of professionals and equipping and furnishing said building. Number three, appropriate twelve-million-one-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars to pay costs of rehabilitating and constructing additions to the police station, including but not limited to the employment of professionals and equipping and furnishing said building and all other costs incidental and related thereto. And to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow four-hundred-ten-thousand dollars of the total appropriation for this project under and pursuant to chapter forty-four B of the General Laws, the Community Preservation Act, and the balance of the total appropriation, eleven-million-seven-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars, under and pursuant to chapter forty-four, section seven of the General Laws, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore, provided, however, that no amounts shall be borrowed or expended hereunder unless the town shall have voted to exclude the amounts required for the payment of principal and interest on the borrowing authorized hereunder from the limitations on property taxes imposed by chapter fifty-nine, section twenty-one C of the General Laws, Proposition Two and a Half. All rehabilitation work on this project that is paid through Community Preservation Act funds shall be undertaken in accordance with the Secretary of the Interior's standards for historic rehabilitation.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Stewart.
The proposed police station project preserves one of the town's most historic, significant historic structures and provides the police department with a modern facility at a very reasonable cost. The Board of Selectmen supports this article.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Mr. Moderator.
Go ahead.
The Finance Committee voted favorable action on this article.
Thank you. Further discussion? Ms. Lopes.
Chairman of the Historical Commission, is this working?
Yes.
Okay. I'm here to report that the Historical Commission has recommended favorable action on this article, and also as chairman of the Community Preservation Committee, to report that the committee has recommended that a total of five-hundred-thousand dollars be devoted, from in Community Preservation Act funds, be devoted to this project over a period of ten years.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Ayers.
Yeah, Ted Ayers, forty-eight Plymouth Street. I've been asked by the Study Committee to give you a brief overview of this project. For some of you who've seen these slides before, but I think they're important to review. We're looking at an existing building here, built in eighteen thirty-five. It's an important historic structure for the town, but it's been occupied by the police station since the thirties, and it's little changed since that time, and this is why we need a modern facility. Existing conditions, again, I think many of you have seen these pictures. We do not basically conform to any contemporary standards for a police station. We basically have, as you can see, all kinds of overcrowding. The space is simply not big enough. And frankly, in terms of, for the officers charged with basically processing those under arrest, it's a dangerous situation. And this is why this committee, starting in two thousand and four, was charged with doing something about it. We've looked at a number of different locations throughout town. Again, you see there, on the lower left, the stair to the detention area. I think you can understand that in the case of someone who is impaired, there's a great risk to the officer escorting that person down. Again, you look at also the outdated HVAC and electrical systems. Again, you look at also the outdated HVAC and electrical systems, locker rooms. Again, you look at what we have and what's required by contemporary standards. So, we started looking at different sites, and both outside and inside of the town center. We basically hired Castle Booze Associates, the architect, from town meeting vote last year. They developed the plans that we have. Those plans have been put out to bid, and we have a fixed price for the project. We basically came up with this proposal through a lot of questions, both to the police department staff. We tried to basically thread through what is legally required at this point, to come up with a useful reuse of the existing facility. I should add that by reusing the existing building, we save money. By reusing the existing property, we save the expense of acquiring property where we locate the, the police station at, in another location. Again, you see here the floor plans, you see the site plan here. It's, it is a positive benefit that we can basically preserve and continue to use the old building, which is an important historical asset for the town. But the net value here is that it saves us money by using the site and using the existing building. If you look at these perspective views, you can get an idea of what the new station would look like. Again, I think you can agree with me that it fits with the existing landscape, fits within the scope of the town. The, the new structure is different, at the same time, it is related, so that it, it provides the space accommodations we need. Again, here you can see, we also have an outbuilding for a pair of vehicles located to the rear of that Jackson Street parking lot. There's a view of that building. Project costs, as you can see, the projected cost, twelve million one hundred and thirty thousand. We initially got estimates that it was going to be twelve million seven hundred. We actually were able to get, through the bidding process, a much cheaper price. I assure you, myself as a taxpayer, everyone on the committee is a taxpayer, we have done everything we could to keep the cost of this project at a minimum. The problem we have, police stations are expensive to build. It's not like building an office building. Requirements of nine-one-one and, and other mandated programs mean extra, extra costs are built into every square foot of a police station. Once again, by using the existing building, we're able to moderate those costs. As you can see here, the potential impact, the first year on a single-family house, one twenty-six, going down to fifty-nine dollars thirty years from now. Needless to say, with the inflation rate, you can imagine what fifty-nine dollars it would be worth like in thirty years. I hate to think how little it'll be worth. And I, yep. I think. Anyway, certainly those of you who have questions or wish further comment, please feel free.
Thank you, Ted.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Thomas, I believe you were next at the mic.
Mr. Moderator, I cannot believe I'm being asked tonight to vote on an abomination of such gigantic proportions. And I cannot believe we put in place a police station building committee, which has broken faith with middleborough taxpayers to such an extent as to allow this revulsion to present itself here. Be that as it may, I stand in opposition to the conversion of the existing police station, also known as the Pierce Store, into a modern-day Acropolis. I stand in opposition because such a transformation was never part of any original intent. Your best recollection, recollection should allow you to correctly remember that the once favored options of Wood Street and St. Luke's Hospital were broached without mention of any historic preservation. I stand opposed because I remember there was no concomitant proposal at those times to historically preserve the existing police station for any use at all. Building a new police station on the Wood Street site or the hospital site were, at those times, standalone propositions. Building a new police station should still be a standalone proposition. There should be no historic preservation baggage. I stand opposed because partisans on the police station building committee have tried to brainwash citizens into believing a police station belongs in the downtown area. Then they define and limit the downtown area to the footprint of the current police station only. To prove this, the committee has rejected outright the winter back in sight, as well as having brushed aside the Rockland Trust Company site at Everett Square and the Telephone Company site at eighty-four South Main Street at the corner of Mayflower Avenue. Obviously, none of these legitimate downtown area sites have conformed to the committee's tunnel vision definition of downtown area, because they never were meant to conform. One must conclude, therefore, the reason for all these rejections has nothing to do with building a new police station per se, and everything to do with historic preservation. I stand in favor of building a new police station. I'd like to repeat that. I stand in favor of building a new police station. I am opposed to historic preservation being any part of that. I could care less about the Pierce Store listing in the National Historic Register and the so-called bragging rights that go along with that. I do care about the preservation of the, of the town's fiscal integrity and mine too. And in that context, I'd like to offer some bullet points, if you please, on some of the finances. Point number one, the touts have told us the cost of this project is twelve point one three million dollars. Twelve million one hundred and thirty thousand. In reality, interest charges make it close to twenty million dollars, and that twenty million is in addition to the six hundred thousand dollars town meeting has previously appropriated. Point number two, the touts have also told us that because the debt exclusion payments on the nickel school run out shortly, shortly being their term, there won't be as much overlap by carrying two debt exclusions at the same time. But I've been told the debt exclusion payments on the nickel school don't expire until two thousand and twenty. Six years away. Six years or seventy-two months cannot be characterized as a timeframe which is shortly running out. It amounts to seventy-two months overlap of two debt exclusion payments for, per month. Point number three, within the last fifteen years, two fire stations have been built for two million dollars apiece, four million dollars. The cost of what the police station building committee deems feasible amounts to six-plus times as much as one of those, and three-plus times the cost of both. Even if you double the impact of inflation over that fifteen years and add another two million dollars for land acquisition and the special costs peculiar only to police stations, you arrive at approximately one-half the cost of what is being asked of us. Point number four, former selectman Steve Spataro last week said, quote, "Only twenty-four percent of the total project cost deals with the rehab of the central, of the general store." I don't know where Mr. Spataro got his figure of twenty-four percent, and I don't know if it is accurate. But if it is correct, the cost of what he calls rehab and what is actually historic preservation amounts to two million nine hundred and eleven thousand two hundred dollars. At the same time, our Community Preservation Committee, as you heard tonight, has come up with what is a puny, piddling payment of fifty thousand dollars a year for ten years, or five hundred thousand dollars for preservation from the Preservation Committee for ten years. That's magnanimous. This is a thirty-year debt exclusion, not ten. Had the, had the Community Preservation Committee doubled the annual payment to one hundred thousand for each of thirty years, or three million dollars, that would have covered what Spataro says is the cost of historic preservation. Mr. Moderator, the full-court press has been on for a long time now. The phrase historic preservation has been recently replaced by the words renovation, restoration, rehab, in quotes from the likes of Adam Bond, Ted Ayers, Jack Healy, Neil Rosenthal, Bob Silver, Steve Spataro, and Ed Maderas. They're trying to make the phrase historic preservation disappear, to go away, to vanish into thin air. Police Station Building Committee member Ted Ayers, for example, was quoted recently in the Rockland Enterprises by Eileen Reese, quote, "It is time for the station to be renovated." Well, as one who has spent his entire lifetime as an historical preservationist, Mr. Ayers should know a choice of words such as renovated is disingenuous as to historical preservation, and it gives credence to the big lie that he and that committee is trying to perpetrate upon us. On another front, former walk-off selectman Adam Bond says the project should be done sooner rather than later because Chief Gates is concerned about, quote, "The negative impact High Point may have on police," end of quote. But any negative impact High Point may have is pure speculation on the part of both Bond and the chief. Police Station Building Committee member Maderas, like so many proponents of the project, claims what is before us, quote, "Makes the most fiscal sense," unquote. And just like all the other proponents, Maderas fails to back up his claim with facts and figures to show how that is so. Makes the most fiscal sense, for all of them though, always refers to historic preservation of the police station. It never refers to the construction of a standalone police station, which in fact makes the most fiscal sense. Police Station Building Committee member Jane Lopes, the longtime editor of the Middleborough Gazette, who not so coincidentally serves as a member of the Historical Commission and the Community Preservation Committee, rather than recuse herself from this issue because of such obvious conflicts of interest, has flexed her considerable muscle from the bully pulpit of the Gazette to push for historic preservation of this project. Together with her unbridled influence on the two relevant boards and her reputation as an aggressive preservationist, it gives her unprecedented clout to be a mover and shaker in plots like this. Let me say that had an elected official participated in such blatant conflicts of interest, Ms. Lopes, in a New York minute, would have blown the whistle on him or her to an appropriate state official. Mr. Moderator, to conclude, and I, I know that, all I know is this, whether it was the Wood Street site or the St. Luke's Hospital site, the original idea was to build a standalone police station. It was a great idea then, and it's a great idea now. Members of the Police Station Building Committee took their eyes off that ball the moment they launched their campaign for historic preservation of the Pierce Store. And that campaign in turn has morphed into a sophisticated, intimidating attempt to cram historic preservation down our throats. It was a violation of the public trust for the, for the Police Station Building Committee to place upon us what should be two separate and unrelated projects. They have played upon our empathy for the one, a police station, while they have acted perfidiously to gain the other, historic preservation, preservation of the Pierce Store. From my standpoint, they should be held in utter contempt by everybody. Remember, historic preservation was not part of any equation at the beginning of this process, and historic preservation should not be offered up as that part of any solution now. When I am presented with a standalone police station to vote for, I'll give it a thumbs up. But when the, a Police Station Building Committee insults my intelligence, as it has, by force-feeding me historic preservation of the Pierce Store as a condition for getting a police station, I cannot, nor will I, support such a hoax. That committee should be disbanded, and a new committee should be formed to focus on the real target. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Mr. Mosley.
Yes. George Mosley, Smith Street. Quite a discussion, but I, I think it's this project to renovate the old courthouse and have a new jail, a police station. It's good money after bad, and it detracts from the preservation of the courthouse. One project at a time. That should, we should preserve the courthouse in its present state, the way it was years ago. I favor a new police station. In the long run, it's less expensive. Location, location is the thing. The Everett Square with, the Rockland Trust bank was, I, I think that's a fair-sized lot. Acquisition may cost money, but you need, we need something enclosed approximately to major roads. And that, that Everett Square would be a good location. Go right down Everett Street, it'd be at Route Forty-four. You go down Oak Street and cross Forty-four and get to Oak Point, the, the back way. So, I, I think this project is just good money after bad. It's, it's reached the point, I don't know what to believe or who believe. We were promised that if we voted for the middle school, it would take, do, do nothing with the, the old junior high. The original idea was to put that on a tax roll. We have a, a fire station that's empty. What's with that? So, I, I, I think we should just forget this notion of renovating that and, and building a, a police station there, because I think it would take away from the, the museum. And also the courthouse. And I believe that the original courthouse was on Main Street. Both historic. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rosenthal.
Mr. Moderator. Neil Rosenthal, Seventy-eight Cedar Street. I'm a member, I'm one of the touts, I guess, on the Building Committee. But in any case, and, and I appreciate what Mr. Thomas says. He's always interesting, and he always is convinced of his opinion, and I applaud him for that. However, in this case, he's totally wrong. I never saw Mr. Thomas at any meeting of the committee, other than recently, when he came to one meeting and asked some questions and went away. and went away seemingly appeased, but obviously not. Uh, right from the beginning, when this Study Committee was started, uh, it was always the mission to find another use for the historic Pierce store, probably the second most important historical structure in the town of Middleborough after the Town Hall. Uh, first, we looked at having the library use it, and they showed some interest, although it was always a question of whether or not it could be funded. But to leave a building like that, go empty, would prove a disaster. Now Bridgewater has just gone through a similar process in which they vacated the Academy Building right in the heart of Bridgewater, a beautiful and historic building. And now they're looking at potentially nine million dollars to spend on renovating that with no real use in, in sight. So we weren't going to fall prey to that kind of thing right from the beginning. It was very clear to us that this building was not only worth saving, but vital to the historical downtown that we, most of us at least, treasure. Now I guess that what I'm here to do is convince you that, that this renovation is actually a good deal. And, so let's look at the size of the, of the building first. And I'll give you a couple comparisons. Harwich built a twenty-two-thousand-square-foot building. They have thirty-three officers. That's six-hundred-and-sixty-seven square foot per officer. Bellingham, with eleven officers, built a thirteen-thousand-square-foot building, which is eleven-hundred-and-eighty-two square feet per officer. Londonderry, New Hampshire, in Hampden, New Hampshire, with forty officers, both built a twenty-four-thousand-square-foot building, uh, six-hundred square feet per officer. Now, the program drives the size of these police stations. It's not something that we invented or came up with is to build a Taj Mahal or anything else. It's simply that you have to do certain things with these buildings. They have to be safe, they have to be efficient, and they have to be built to last a certain amount of time. Obviously, you don't want to outgrow it in, in a few years. So what we've proposed was a fifteen-thousand-square-foot addition, uh, with, which would house the core essential operations in a ten-thousand-square-foot renovation, not a, not necessarily a historical restoration per se, but a renovation while maintaining the historical exterior of the Pierce store building. The Pierce store building would house mechanicals and storage in the basement. The main level would cost the most money, and that would be used, uh, on a daily basis by officers and as a training room, et cetera. The upper level would be mostly horizontal mechanicals because the ceiling height limitations would require that we spend a lot of money there and probably not intelligently. So that space will remain largely unfinished. So to look at the cost of this, uh, the, the fifteen-thousand-square-foot construction cost of the new part of the, of the building, out of a ninety-three, nine thou, nine million, three-hundred-thousand-dollar cost is six million, nine-hundred-thousand dollars. The renovation of the ten-thousand-square-foot part of the existing building is two million, four-hundred-thousand dollars. Now, when you look at the handout, it says that that, that, that the renovation costs three million, four-hundred-thousand, but that's looking at it from, from the twelve-million-dollar figure and taking out, and, and including the soft costs, the furniture, and everything else. The actual construction bid was nine million, three-hundred-thousand dollars, of which the renovation portion is, is about a quarter of that. That's where Mr. Spataro got that, that figure. Now, a new standalone building, since I more or less showed that the average police station today is six-hundred square foot per officer, if it were only twenty-thousand square feet, which is five-thousand square feet more than the fifteen-thousand-square-foot addition, would actually cost nine million, two-hundred-thousand dollars, or one-hundred-thousand dollars less in this total construction project. If, if again, we took the renovation as a standalone, the ten-thousand-square-feet, and we revitalize this so that it could be fully utilized and fully handicapped accessible, you could at least double that two-million, four-hundred-thousand-dollar price to four-million, eight-hundred-thousand, and that's conservative. And these are the costs just of construction. These don't include the soft costs. They don't include the architectural design fees. They don't include any of that. Now, none of us were fixed originally on having the police station remain at its current location. As a matter of fact, we didn't believe that we could build the police station or expand it on the site and have it really be suitable. It was only after we'd investigated the Wood Street site, which was a very viable, feasible site, and over a period of time, heard from many, many people, including the current police chief, that they, that we should keep the police station downstairs, downtown. And having looked, then we looked at other sites, such as the St. Luke's site, which we would have had to acquire and most likely would have had to demolish the current building there, which by the way, to be renovated as a hospital is ten million dollars, never mind what it would have cost to renovate it for our particular needs. It, it wasn't situated appropriately on the site for that, and in, in our likelihood would have ended up having to be demolished. These other, these other, uh, locations are more or less red herrings. Uh, clearly, that Winthrop Atkins Building is in a flood zone. Uh, the, the, another one was the CP Washburn Site, which was right next to the trains, and possibly there could be some kind of incident on the tracks or a chemical situation that would have rendered it impossible. The, uh, the newest one to come up, of course, is the Rockland Trust Building, which isn't nearly big enough. It is on a two-point-four-acre site, but it would require at least a seven-thousand-square-foot addition. And all of these buildings would cost, it, it doesn't matter that there's a shell. Renovation, actually, can many times cost you more than new construction. This is the reason why we're keeping the renovation of the historic Pierce store to a minimum, so that we can minimize the cost. Now, as far as the location goes, uh, once we looked at the current location and realized that if we put the addition on the back and utilize the current building, uh, that in fact, uh, we could fit it on the site and only ultimately lose about ten or twelve parking spaces. And that it would, in fact, wouldn't cost us anymore, that we'd, we'd, uh, solve the two birds with one stone thing because now we had the revitalization and reuse of the historic building that we'd looked at all along, and that in fact, uh, it was the best, it was the best deal. Now, previous, previous town meetings have heard this story and have seen it as convincing enough to have advanced us six-hundred-thousand dollars for, for the design and bidding process. Luckily, we just received a bid that was six-hundred-thousand dollars less than what our estimators expected us to get as a bid, which means that that town meeting money, basically, was extremely well-spent because it cost us nothing. The total cost of the design and bidding process, the architectural, for the entire project, are eight-hundred-and-seventy thousand. So based on what we've gotten for a bid, if we're capable of acting on that, based on the debt exclusion vote, uh, we would save most of that money. So that would be actually a freebie. Now, every board in the town who has supported this, they're not all touts. They're not all undertake. They're not all somehow involved in this thing in some, in some conspiracy. Uh, the, a debt exclusion is a very difficult thing. If it wasn't for the debt exclusion, this would be, this would be so obviously a good project that, that it wouldn't even, I don't think it would take any further discussion to sell it. But a debt exclusion is tough because it requires people to make a sacrifice and to pay more in taxes, and that's always a tough thing to sell. The only time we've asked people to do that in the past several years was on the Nichols School. And while that doesn't run out until 2020, it's come down dramatically from what people were originally paying to, to the point where it's almost insignificant in terms of affecting this debt exclusion. We at first thought that if we retired that debt exclusion, that we could just pick up and it really wouldn't cost people anymore. But this comes down over the years, just like this one. We'll start at around a hundred-and-twenty dollars a year and drop to fifty-nine. That one has dropped all the way down to where it's an insignificant amount of money. Now, in the last, in the last twenty years, we've built the fire stations, and I was on those building committees. And believe me, the fire stations are a very different deal than this. We built the, we rehabbed the one in downtown and changed it. I think that price I know is somewhere around two-point-six million. And we built the one in North Middleborough for about a million dollars. That was a wonderful deal. We redid the Town Hall. That was, that went from embarrassing to inspirational. That was, I think, about three-point-six million and a million to rehab the building downtown. We built the Nichols School, the, the one that did require a debt exclusion. We redid the Early Childhood Center. It's now open, warm, and effective as, as a school. There was no other legitimate use for it. The town owns all the land around it. Uh, we couldn't very well sell off the land and leave the building with no land, and it would have cost a fortune to use it for any other reason. Now, once again, it's a vital part of, of our downtown heritage and functioning as a school. I don't think anybody regrets doing any of this. So call me a preservationist as you will, if you will, but when I drive through Historic Sandwich or I go down the Cape and I see the economic impact that these buildings have and the tourism that's generated from it, I can't, I can't believe that we ought to just tear all those buildings down. And I can't believe that anybody could seriously consider that we should tear down our, our second most significant building and the only one in town on the National Register, uh, and because, because it's just old. There is no reason in the world that that building can't go on being a beautiful part of downtown Middleborough in the most historic district of downtown Middleborough for the next hundred years. And I hope that you all support this and send it to the debt exclusion. Uh, previous town meetings have supported this. This isn't a couple of people on a committee pushing this deal. This is the people of the town exercising their will through their town meetings who have supported this all along. Thank you.
Yeah, um, Dave Thomas.
Yeah.
Ten Elisha Drive in Middleborough. Um, I wear a couple caps in town. The one I'm speaking about tonight is not going to speak in, in a, uh, favor of or against the police department. I wear the cap of a park commissioner. Uh, there's been a lot of talk about a building. There's no question whether we need a, a police, a new police station. That's not the issue. Uh, I've spoken to a couple people and, on different committees, and, um, one of my jobs as a commissioner of the park department is to keep it a safe place for anyone that goes there for whatever reasons. Um, there's been no talk about parking. Okay? There's been an alluded to of losing some spaces, uh, seventeen spaces being taken from the existing parking lot. There's been no study, that I've been handed anyway, about parking. It came to my attention the other day, I have a plan of where the little spots are. What we don't have is where is the parking going to be during construction? How many spots will be lost? And where are those people going to go? Okay, the library parking lot does not work. Okay, that's not what it was built for. Okay, and when they go down the street after they can't get in there, the next turn is the left into the park. We can't have that. We can't handle it. And it's the safety of your kids. It's the safety of you. It needs to be addressed. It needs, you need to convince me that it's not going to be a problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Andrews.
Mr. Moderator, Lincoln Andrews, Twenty-Eighth Sagent Street. The Capital Planning Committee voted to support this article. And taking off that hat, um, I'd like to make a couple of comments. First of all, I have never seen town meeting brainwashed by anybody. And, uh, second is Thomas Pierce. If this one person that everybody in this town has a debt to is Thomas Pierce, who set up the Pierce trustees, from whom we benefit, uh, every year for generations and for generations to come. He also donated our library to us in the building which is current, which was his general store, which is currently being used a police station, as a police station. I'll let it, uh, you decide as individuals as to what worth that has. The, the, at the core of this question, it's very simple. It's whether or not we want to send this to the voters to allow the, the voters at whole to decide whether or not they want to have a debt, debt exclusion, raise the taxes as they all see, or not to let the people vote. And in my estimation, it's that simple, and we ought to just go ahead and pass it along and let the voters at large decide. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. Any further discussion? Chief Gates.
I don't think I have to go on and on about the needs of this police station for the people that show up and go to where they're called when you call 911. This needs to be done. Um, this station is pathetic. It's dangerous. It's insecure. It needs to be done. But I will tell everyone here at this meeting that this Study Committee has gone on for ten years. And I can guarantee you that my input on the interior of this building with the core operations of this police department, the detention, the weapons security, the evidence security, the dispatch, it was the priority that this was going to be a modern police station, and it is. The old part of the building will be used for less critical functions. But I can assure you that this is a modern police station, and there was no, uh, there was no arm twisting or back, backdoor deals on this. At some point, I forget when, um, I told, they were concerned about the look of the building. I said, "Listen, you worry about the outside, I'll worry about the inside, and it's done right inside." So I just want to make sure everybody at this meeting knows that the priority of, of the committee was a modern police station. We did have two missions. One was to preserve that old building. And we're going to do that by doing these two things at once and getting them both over with. Because if we, we, if we leave there, you're going to have CP Washburn and Gray Mill rotting away on the corner of North Main and Jackson Street in a couple of years because it's going to cost a ton of money to rehab it. So I, I, I just want to assure the town that the police station was the priority in this project.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Mr. Burgess.
Ron Burgess, Fifty-One Summer Street. The town is based on its history, and this project definitely keeps, you know, the history of Middleborough alive, and it provides a working, usable police station. You just heard from the chief. He's happy with, with this plan. Um, as far as I'm concerned, as much as I dislike debt exclusions and as, as often as I've disagreed with Neil, I think this is something that we should vote on and vote on it positively. It's our police station. It's our police force. And, uh, it, it, it's only going to benefit us as citizens to have a, a modern operating setup. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jack Lee.
Yeah, Mr. Healy.
Two Twenty-two Burgess Street. Uh, the cost of borrowed money will never be lower. Now is the time.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
Tracy Craig, 22 Level Street. I'm not against building a new police station. However, as a member of the Nichols Building Committee, I'm not sure if the Police Study Building Committee realized that when we built the middle school, the building committee planned for another school to be located there. There's plenty of land there. We brought the utilities in under the road. So the road's there, the utilities are there, and we already own the land. I don't know if the building committee considered that site. It would be a nice site. The Nichols School certainly has enough issues up there to warrant having the police close by. And my son went through it, my daughter went through it, so I know. And having the police downtown is nice, but the majority of the houses aren't clustered around there. Middleborough's a very big town. Trying to get through the middle of town with the stoplights and the traffic, it's very difficult for the police to get out in case of an emergency. I'm thinking that it would be better to have a police station on a more accessible part of town, on property that we already own, where the utilities are there and the infrastructure's there. And I'm not sure, I didn't attend any of the meetings, but I didn't know if the building committee was aware that the Nichols Building Committee planned ahead for the future. If we're not going to put a school there, why not put a police station there? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Andrews.
I wasn't going to say this at first, but town meeting has twice voted to expend money and investigate and pursue the construction of the new police station. The first was $50,000 for a feasibility study, and the second was $600,000 for design funding of the police station where it is right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Thomas.
When it comes time to take a vote, Mr. Moderator, I move that we, to avoid any possibility of intimidation of any kind, that we take this vote by Australian ballot, sir.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to take this vote by paper ballot. I'm going to entertain that motion. I'm going to open it to discussion. And then we're going to vote on the motion as to how we're going to vote on Article Eight.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Andrews.
So, right now, we have three choices before us. I had a full thing. I was hoping we weren't going to get to this point and consume everybody's time. Once again, at the core of this article is a simple decision. The article is not to decide whether or not to build a station. The article is to decide to send a choice to the residents of Middleborough to cast secret votes at the ballot box to engage or not engage in a debt exclusion and to construct or not to construct and pay for a station. So there are three choices available to this body. One, consume all of our time on a secret ballot because we fear retribution from the police. Two, to conduct a normal vote, to send or not to send this vote to the ballot box on June 14th for a vote. Or three, in the spirit of liberty, we can put paper bags over all the police officers' heads so they can't see us vote.
Mr. Moderator. Adrian LaPonacobi Drive.
Go ahead.
I am a police officer in this town. I work with some outstanding men and women. Salt of the earth, good people. I understand there are some objections to this. I don't necessarily agree with them all. But I understand the merit to them. To somehow suggest that the Middleborough Police Department is going to somehow engage in some type of retribution or retaliation against the men who live in this town, I find highly offensive and ridiculous, quite frankly. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, any further discussion?
Mr. Moderator.
Go ahead, Mr. Fraley.
Alan Fraley, 35 Forest Street. I think there are three things, maybe four things, that are kind of at the heart of this. I haven't heard one person state that we didn't need a new police station. I think we can all be in agreement, at least for the most part, that we do need this.
Hold the microphone.
I'm sorry. I think we can all be in agreement that we need a new police station. I think we can all be in agreement that construction costs will never be lower. And I think we can also all be in agreement that interest rates will never be lower. Keeping those three things in mind, I think it's prudent for town meeting to send this to ballot so that the town can decide if this is the right move to make at this time. We should let the voters, all of the voters, not 200-plus voters at town meeting, let the voters who have eight hours to access the polls make this decision as a whole. Thank you.
All right. The motion, however, before us is to whether or not to vote this in a normal way or to do it with a paper ballot, on an Australian ballot. So seeing no further discussion, it requires a simple majority vote to say whether or not we're going to vote Article Eight one way or the other. The way the motion is read, if you vote yes, you'll be saying that you want to vote by paper ballot. If you vote no, it means that we will vote in a conventional manner. That being said, I think we're going to count the vote right from the beginning so that there is no misunderstanding. So all those in favor of using a paper ballot, Section one. Section two. Section three. Section four. Section five. And section six. All right, all those in favor of a standard ballot, Section one. Section two. Section three. Section four. Section five. What is it? The vote is six in favor, 221 in opposition. The motion does not carry. We'll now move to the vote on Article Eight. Article Eight requires a two-thirds vote, so we're going to have to count it also. So those in favor of the motion on Article Eight, Section one. Section two. Section three. Section four. Section five. Section six. All right, all those opposed to the motion on Article Eight, Section one. Section two. Section three. Section five. Section four. There were 232 votes cast, 214 of them in favor, 18 in opposition. A two-thirds vote would have required 148. The motion carries. Article nine.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moulton.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate $73,000 from taxation to purchase new police cruisers, $66,000, and new portable radios, $7,000, for the police department.
I have a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moulton.
Articles nine through 16 are being proposed by the Capitol Planning Committee to fund the capital needs of the town for the coming year. There are copies of the current five-year capital plan available at the back of the room. The Board of Selectmen is recommending favorable action on articles nine through 16.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Can we get the mic up here, please?
Better.
That's better, thank you.
Mr. Moderator, Steve Morris, Chairman of the Capitol Planning Committee. Capitol Planning Committee recommends Article Nine. This will replace the remaining radios.
Okay, any further discussion?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Pavadouris.
The Finance Committee did meet with the Capitol Planning Committee as well and voted favorable action on this article, as well as Article nine through 16.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none and hearing none, Article Nine requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed signify by saying nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries. Article 10.
Do you want me to do it?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Fraley.
I move that the town vote to appropriate $155,000 by borrowing to purchase a new command vehicle for $55,000 and a new personal... I moved that the town vote to appropriate $155,000 by borrowing to purchase a new command vehicle for $55,000, new personal protective equipment for $100,000 for the fire department, and to meet this appropriation, authorize the treasurer with approval of the Board of Selectmen to borrow $155,000 under General Laws, Chapter 44.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Moderator.
Dr. Morris.
The vehicle is not that old, but it's a piece of junk, and so we need to replace it. It's had over $28,000 worth of repairs done on it. It only has 150,000 miles, but the fuel system's been repaired 10 times, the front end, the drivetrain. So it desperately needs to be replaced. It's been limping along now for close to six to 12 months. And the personal protective equipment needs to be replaced every 10 years by the National Fire Association recommendation. And that will... There's still a year left in that, but it takes nine to 12 months to measure fit and get the equipment in for the firefighters. That includes the coat, the pants, the vapor barrier, and the heat barrier. So we're starting the process early, so it'll be ready for 2015.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right, Article 10, because it's borrowing, requires a two-thirds vote. We'll try it by supermajority first. If that doesn't work, we'll go to a count. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed signify by saying nay. Thank you. The motion carries unanimously. Article 11.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Dolphy.
I move that the town vote to appropriate $173,000 by borrowing to purchase a new pickup plow at $61,000 and used cabs and chassis at $20,000 for the Public Works Department and a new mower at $92,000 for the Park Department and to meet this appropriation, to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to borrow $173,000 under General Laws, Chapter 44.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Moderator.
Dr. Morris.
The mower at the Park Department is 17 years old, and we're recommending replacement. A new extended cab, four-wheel-drive plow for the DPW. And the last item is sort of interesting to us. It's a new approach we're taking in the DPW. The two vehicles that we want to replace, we're just asking for used cabs and chassis for $20,000, so 10 each. These are six-wheeled vehicles that are plow and sand, and they go for $140,000 to $150,000 apiece. And originally, that was the request. One of them is 24 years old, and one is 30 years old. And the steel body that contains the sand and salt is okay. It hasn't rotted, but the bodies, the truck bodies have. So we are going to try... The DPW director has done this, and it's his last job, to get new cabs and chassis used and just move the bed that contains the salt and sand onto them and save... So instead of $300,000, we're going to try to do it for $20,000. So if this works, we're going to try this approach in the future because we have more of these to replace next year and the year after. And they all run the $140,000 to $170,000. So we'll report back to you next year if this is working well.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Once again, Article 11, because it requires borrowing, requires a two-thirds vote. And once again, I'll try by supermajority. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries unanimously. Article 12.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. McKinnon.
I move that the town vote to appropriate $196,495 by borrowing to purchase a replacement animal control vehicle, $22,000, to purchase new voting booths and protective covers, $24,500, to engineer permit and construct the expansion of the Council of Aging parking lot, $30,000, to replace the roof in the Council of Aging building, $100,000, to replace carpeting in the library, $19,995, and to meet this appropriation, to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to borrow $196,495 under General Law, Chapter 44.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Moderator.
Dr. Morris.
The roof at the COA is 22 years old and leaking. The library carpet is same age and needs to be replaced. This is down in the children's library on the basement floor. The animal control vehicle has 200,000 miles on it, and it's burning oil, leaking antifreeze, and leaking oil and extensive rot. The voting booths were built by the Boy Scouts several years ago, and they're made of plywood, and they're heavy. They're splintering and unsafe. And so this would be for new voting booths at all precincts, handicapped, accessible. They all come with handicap booths and with covers to protect them so that we have them for a number of years. And what else is on there? Oh, the parking lot, to expand the parking lot at the COA.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, hearing none. Article 12, because it incorporates borrowing, also requires a two-thirds vote. So we'll try this again. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed signify by saying nay. The motion carries unanimously. Article 13.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Stewart.
I move that the town vote to appropriate $165,000 by borrowing to renovate bathrooms at a cost of $80,000 and to replace the intercom system at a cost of $60,000 at the elementary complex and to repair elevators at the Memorial Early Childhood Center at a cost of $25,000 and to meet this appropriation, to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to borrow $165,000 under General Laws, Chapter 44.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Moderator.
Dr. Morris.
The bathrooms, we're recommending bathrooms be done both here in the high school, and that'll be coming up in Article 15, and the bathrooms in the elementary complex. This will put new partitions in. They'll be plastic now instead of metal, fastened, top, bottom, and sideways. New toilets, if they're cracked, they'll be replaced, and sinks. And we'll now have urinals that will flush only... They'll be waterless, and the maintenance people will come in with a key and flush them. So they won't have any flush mechanisms that can be broken or need to be replaced. They'll be taken care of by the janitors. And the intercom system at the elementary complex, this has become a problem only in the sense that now, because of this day and age, if there's ever a lockdown, you need to be able to reach all students. And this can't broadcast into the entire school. So, you know, 10 years ago, this probably wouldn't have been a problem. We could have just limped along. But nowadays, you have to reach everyone if there's a lockdown. And so that's why we're recommending this.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none and hearing none. Article 13 also requires a two-thirds vote due to borrowing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed signify by saying nay. I heard a nay, so we're going to have to count it. All those in favor of... All those in favor of the article from, the motion on Article Thirteen, please stand and be counted. Section Five. And Section Six. All those in opposition, please rise and be counted. Section One. Section Two. Section Three. Section Four. Section Five. And Section Six. There were one hundred and sixty-six votes cast, one hundred and sixty-five in favor, one in opposition. It would've required one hundred and eleven votes to pass the motion carries. Article Fourteen.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Norton.
I move that the town vote to appropriate one hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars by borrowing to replace two boilers, ninety thousand dollars, and two hot water tanks, forty-seven thousand dollars, at the Nichols Middle School, and to meet this appropriation, to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to borrow one hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars under General Laws, Chapter Forty-four.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion.
Ms. Moderator.
Dr. Morris.
The hot water tanks are at the Nichols School, and they, there were two of them, four-hundred gallon tanks. One just let loose a few months ago, you know, leaking, it's out of service, and we're recommending to replace both of them, because they're both the same age. The water, the hot water boilers, this is the boilers, not the burners, at the Nichols School. There were four of them, two of them down for a while. We would like to replace them before we get into the next winter. They're both cracked and leaking, and they're unable to be repaired.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, Article Fourteen also requires a two-thirds vote due to borrowing. So we'll try it one more time. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed signify by saying nay. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Article Four, Article Fifteen.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Farley.
I move that the town vote to appropriate one hundred and twenty thousand dollars by borrowing for various building improvements at Middleborough High School, and to meet this appropriation, to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to borrow one hundred and twenty thousand dollars under General Laws, Chapter Forty-four.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion.
Ms. Moderator.
Dr. Morris.
Again, we're doing the bathroom renovations that I talked about earlier here at the high school. They'll, petitions, toilets, sinks, if they need them, and they'll remove the handles and the flush mechanisms, and it'll be done by the custodians, so they'll be waterless. Also, we're continuing the phasing in of new lightings. Those have, the bulbs that they make for the lights in the, in the high school are no longer made, the bulbs, so we need to replace those. And the same with the ceiling tiles. The ceiling tiles and the grids that hold them up are no longer made, so every time we need to replace one, we have no replacements. So that's what we're doing.
Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, Article Fifteen also requires a two-thirds vote due to the borrowing. So we'll try this one more time. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed signify by saying nay. The motion carries unanimously. Article Sixteen.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Dolby.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars from taxation to purchase staff, classroom computers, printers, and file servers, LCD projectors, and instructional technology, and computer network infrastructure for the school department.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion.
Ms. Moderator.
Dr. Morris.
This is a continuation of, of a motion, of a article that you're going to see probably every year. This is the fourth year in a row we've recommended this. It's exactly as what you see for all these different items, for computers, handheld computers, with Wi-Fi in all the schools. Ellen Driscoll, the system administrator, has been doing a great job. You'll probably see this every year. It's a way, a fact of life now with computers. They have to constantly be changed and updated. By the time we've, you know, finished this project, we'll be back to replacing what we did, you know, six, seven, eight years ago. So it's an ongoing article, I think, that you can expect to see every year. And they've been doing a great job. We're very impressed with the progress they've made in the schools. When we started this four years ago, the computers in the Nichols School were twelve years old, so we had a lot of catching up to do.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Article Sixteen requires a simple majority vote. We're not borrowing this time, we're using your tax dollars. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those in opposition signify by saying nay. Motion carries unanimously. Article Seventeen.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. McKinnon.
I move that the town vote to appropriate four million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars by borrowing for all relevant and necessary expenses associated with the design and construction of a water treatment plant, and associated improvements for the East Main Street wells for the Water Department, and to meet this appropriation, to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to borrow four million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars under General Laws, Chapter Forty-four, and to provide that the debt shall be paid from the revenues of the water enterprise system.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. McKinnon.
The East Main Street, the East Main Street wells have high iron and manganese levels. A new water treatment plant at these wells will significantly improve the water quality throughout the town.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Ms. Moderator.
Mr. Pavadore.
The Finance Committee recommended favorable action on this article.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, hearing none, Article Seventeen requires a two-thirds vote because of borrowing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed signify by saying nay. The vote is unanimous, then the ayes have it. Article Eighteen.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Stewart.
I move that the town vote to appropriate one million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars by borrowing for all relevant and necessary expenses associated with the design and construction of a well, well pumping station, and associated improvements at the Mazaras Well Site for the Water Department, and to meet this appropriation, to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to borrow one million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars under General Laws, Chapter Forty-four, and to provide that the debt shall be paid from the revenues of the water enterprise system.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Stewart.
The Mazaras Well Site has received all the necessary approvals from the Department of Environmental Protection, and is ready to be constructed. This new well will allow us to rest our existing wells, and will also improve water quality throughout the town.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Pavadore.
The Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, Article Eighteen requires a two-thirds vote due to borrowing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed signify by saying nay. The motion carries unanimously. Article Nineteen.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Norton.
I move that the town vote to appropriate or reserve from the Community Preservation Fund annual revenues in the amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for committee administrative expenses, debt service, community preservation projects, and other expenses in fiscal year two thousand and fifteen, with each item to be considered a separate appropriation. From FY two fifteen, estimated revenues for committee administrative expenses, thirteen thousand dollars, reserves for FY two fifteen, estimated revenues for historic resources reserve, twenty-six thousand, six hundred. From FY two thousand and fifteen, estimated reserves for community housing reserve, twenty-six thousand, six hundred. From FY two thousand and fifteen, estimated reserves for open space reserve, twenty-six thousand, six hundred. From FY two thousand and fifteen, estimated revenues for budgeted reserve, one hundred and seventy-four thousand, two hundred dollars.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Norton.
Articles nineteen through twenty-two are being proposed by the Community Preservation Committee. The Board of Selectmen is recommending favorable action on articles nineteen through twenty-two.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Pavadore.
Finance Committee is recommending favorable action on this article.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Mr. Moderator.
Yeah?
The, this article is basically a housekeeping article. The, the law requires us to divide up our money this way, to set aside ten percent each year for the three categories you see there, historic resources, community housing, and open space, and to put the rest in a reserve account.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right, Article Nineteen requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed signify by saying nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Article Twenty.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Farley.
I move that the town will vote to appropriate twelve thousand dollars from the Community Housing Resources Reserve of the Community Preservation Fund, and eight thousand from the budgeted reserve fund balance of the Community Preservation Fund to fund a portion of the Middleborough Housing Authority's Nemaska Apartments Window Project on Sproat Street for the purposes of improving housing conditions for ten elderly housing units in two buildings. Said funds to be expended under the direction of the Community Preservation Committee.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion.
Joe Ruthwitz from the Housing Authority.
Yes, go ahead.
This, the twenty thousand will purchase ninety windows in the ten apartments.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, Article Twenty requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries unanimously. Article Twenty-One.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Dolby.
I move that the town vote to appropriate twenty-five thousand, five hundred and thirty-nine dollars from the Historic Resources Reserve of the Community Preservation Fund, and twenty-three thousand, three hundred and sixty-one dollars from the budgeted reserve fund balance of the Community Preservation Fund, to stabilize the building envelope of the barn, woodshed, and farmhouse at the Soul Homestead property. Said funds to be expended under the direction of the Community Preservation Committee.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Wolbs.
This money, I'm not sure everyone knows, but the Soul Homestead is owned by the town and leased by the Soul Homestead Education Center, and so the town owns these buildings, and this money will help to reconstruct or replace portions of the barn, woodshed, and farmhouse.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Yes. I'm just curious to see.
Could you identify yourself?
My name is Darlene Anastis.
Okay, I couldn't see you through the lifestyle.
That's all right. I'm just curious to know if this, the, the money being expended here is, or is not, part of the lease obligations of the tenant.
Could you answer that, Jane?
Sure. No. As a matter of fact, the Community Preservation Committee pretty much requires applicants to make an investment of their own when they're applying for community preservation funds. And so the Soul Homestead Board provided the Community Preservation Committee with a list of repairs and improvements that are to be made over the next two years, which is the period of time, period of time that this money will be expended. And the money that, that the homestead is planning on spending is far in excess of this money.
Thank you. Does that answer your question?
Not really, because I don't have specifics. I mean, I'll support it because I support the preservation of this farm, but I just don't have the numbers that make it, if it's an obligation or not.
Okay.
And I don't have specifics on it.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator. The, the simple answer is, this has nothing to do with the, this is apart from the obligation that the homestead has to the town, and that, which is expressed in its report to the town every year.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, Article Twenty-One requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed signify by saying nay. The article, the motion carries unanimously. Article Twenty-Two.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. McKinnon.
I move that the town vote to appropriate seventy-seven thousand, one hundred and eighty-four dollars from the budgeted reserve fund balance of the Community Preservation Fund to stabilize the building envelope of the Green School located at two-five-one East Main Street. Said funds to be expended under the direction of the Community Preservation Committee.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion.
Ms. Moderator.
Mr. Pavadore.
Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Wolbs.
This, the Green School project was begun by a group of citizens a couple of years ago, and they have basically completed work on the exterior of the building, and now the money that they are applying for will complete the interior and allow this building to be used by town committees and other groups.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right, Article Twenty-Two requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries unanimously. Article Twenty-Three.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Stewart.
I move that the town vote to amend the existing zoning map and zoning bylaw by deleting the existing zoning map in its entirety and replacing it with a new zoning map amended through town meeting action of May twenty-seventh, two thousand and fourteen, on file with the town clerk, which new zoning map causes the following substantive changes. First, remove the designated potential well site off of Tinkham Lane, Taunton Street, located on Accessor's Map, fifty-six, lots one-six-nine-nine, one-five-one-five, in its one-thousand-foot radius interim wellhead protection area. Second, remove the one-thousand-foot radius interim wellhead protection area around the Mazaras Well off of Plymouth Street in North Middleborough, and replace it with WRPD Z-one, Z-two, and Z-three zones as shown. And third, add the Cross Street Two well and its WRPD Z-one, Z-two, and Z-three zones as shown.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Labonte.
Mr. Moderator. Mike Labonte, three Sheffield Road, Chairman of the Planning Board. On May twentieth, two thousand and fourteen, the Middleborough Planning Board voted to recommend favorable action on Article Twenty-Three, zoning map and zoning bylaw amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, Article Twenty-Three requires a two-thirds vote because it's a zoning issue. Could you use the microphone, please?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Do we have a, can we have a quorum call?
Yes, we can. If you're calling for one, I certainly can.
The money, the thing, I know somewhere against it, and I'm against it. And it's a very important vote on whether, so I want to make sure we get a quorum. I want to make sure we get a quorum.
Okay, um, I've been asked for a quorum, um, count, so if my counters will, um, if all voters would please stand and be counted. Section two. Section three. Section four. Section five. How many? Thank you. We have a hundred and fifty-six, which is fifty-six more than the necessary quorum to maintain business. So we can, if there's no further discussion on Article twenty-three, and I'll ask one more time, I seen on Article twenty-three requires a two-thirds vote. We will try it, uh, by supermajority first. If that doesn't work, we'll go to a counted, counted count. Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed signify by saying nay. The motion carries unanimously. Article twenty-four.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Knowlton.
I move that the town vote to amend its zoning bylaw as follows. Amend section eight point two point nine, WRPD Z-four special permit uses by adding a new subsection A. Enlargement or alteration of existing uses and structures that do not conform to the Water Resource Protection District are prohibited, but may be allowed by special permit provided the enlargement or alteration does not increase the existing nonconformity or create a new nonconformity, with the exception of single and two-family uses and structures. Enlargement of existing structures shall not be permitted by special permit if a variance from Title Five of the State of Sanitary Code is necessary, and designating the existing subsections formerly A through J as B through K.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Labonte.
Mr. Moderator, thank you. Uh, on April twentieth, two thousand and fourteen, the Planning Board, uh, voted to recommend favorable, uh, action on Article twenty-four.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, um, Article twenty-four because it's zoning also requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries unanimously. Article twenty-five.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Frawley.
I move that the town vote to transfer the care, custody, and manage, management, and control of the Green School property located at the southerly side of East Main Street, shown as lot four-eight-one-four on Assessor's Map, zero-four-two, and a parcel of land on East Main Street abutting the westerly line of the Green School property, containing nine thousand, seven hundred square feet, more or less, being a, being a part of lot four-eight-eight, uh, four-eight-four-four on Assessor's Map, zero-four-two, and bounded and described as follows. Beginning at a point in the southerly sideline of East Main Street at the northwesterly corner of the Green School property, then southerly ninety-three feet, more or less in a westerly line of the Green School property, to the southwesterly corner of the Green School property, thence turning at a right angle westerly, one hundred and four point two-two feet, more or less, to a westerly line of lot four-eight-four-four, thence north, northernly in said westerly line of lot four-eight-four-four, a distance of ninety-three feet, more or less, to the southerly sideline of East Main Street, thence easterly in the southerly sideline of East Main Street, one hundred and four point two-two feet, more or less, to the point of beginning, to the Board of Selectmen for general municipal uses and purposes.
Second.
Mr. Moderator.
Do I have a second?
Board of Selectmen-
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Go ahead, discussion.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Frawley.
The Board of Selectmen is willing to accept care, custody, and management of the Green School property.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, hearing none, Article twenty-five requires a two-thirds vote because it's transferring property. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries unanimously. Article twenty-six.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Olbig.
I move that the town vote to approve the establishment of a stabilization fund according to the Massachusetts General Law, C seventy-one, section sixteen, G one and two, for the Bristol-Plymouth Regional Technical School District.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Olbig.
A well management stabilization fund for Bristol-Plymouth will help to mitigate future assessment increases for necessary capital projects.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Mr. Moderator. Board of Selectmen voted to support this article.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, um, Article twenty-six requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries unanimously. Article twenty-seven.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. McKinnon.
I vote, I move that the town vote to extend the term of the intermunicipal agreement for regional cooperation in the provision of solid waste and recycling services for South Shore Recycling Cooperative for an additional term through June thirty, two thousand and eighteen, and further to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to execute and deliver an amended intermunicipal agreement, a copy of which is on file with the town clerks, uh, to effect the extension of the term and other changes set forth therein.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. McKinnon.
The intermunicipal agreement has been reauthorized by the town meeting every five years.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Article twenty-seven requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Article twenty-eight.
Hello, hello, Mr. Moderator. Steve Ventreska, Lilo Drive Conservation Commission.
Can I get the mic down down here?
It's up all the way. Steve Ventreska, Lilo Drive. Um, I'd like Article twenty-eight, the wetland bylaw. I'd like to, uh, request a motion to consider the article as written.
Okay, do I have a second? I have a motion and a second to consider the article as written. I will open for discussion.
Mr. Moderator.
Uh, Ms. Stewart.
The Board of Selectmen voted not to support this article.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Mr. Moderator.
Yeah, go ahead.
Adam Geraldi of Oliver Street.
Okay.
Um, I work for an environmental consulting company out of Worcester. We do work within the region and, uh, throughout New England. Um, I have a lot of experience with dealing with concert, conservation commissions and with permits through the Conservation Commission. Um, I have two points on this. I, I partially agree with this, with this motion. Um, the part that I agree about is section five, specifically paragraphs three and four. Um, the fees in which they are proposing in the bylaw are in addition to existing , uh, Wetland Protection Act fees. Um, these fees are, um, the Wetland Protection Act already has existing fees for a permit. Uh, the, seems that the Conservation Commission is asking for additional fees, uh, on top of that to investigate the, um, the applications in, in, in the permit. Um, it seems like a, uh, confusion on this is that, that people think that the taxpayers are going to be responsible for these. It's not. This would be just a fee based on, um, each application. So if you're not app- applying to do anything, there is no cost to you. It's just to help support for each individual permit. Um, I do agree with this. Um, however, section thirteen was very brief and simply stated, uh, required that if you were to appeal the Conservation Commission's determination, that the appeal would then have to go to not only the Mass DEP but to the Supreme Court. Um, and I strongly disagree with this because, uh, applicants already have the option of appealing to the Mass DEP if the CONCOM denies that, and that is a, a good option because while, um, they work independently, the Mass DEP works independently of the Conservation Commission, they both have the same intentions. So if they're, believe that they're being treated unfairly or unjustly, they do have the option to seek outside. Um, and to do that based on this bylaw, it would require the Supreme Court, um, involvement, which is very costly to the application, to, to the applicant. And, uh, the Supreme Court process may not be completely informed on the regulations and requirements of, uh, conservation. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Uh, my name's Paul Doss Bonosa. I live on Fay Avenue. Um, I'm, uh, my appeal is, is, is a personal one. Uh, I happen to live with my wife on a piece of property that borders a, a pond and, uh, white cedar swamp wetlands. My problem with this is that, um, the treatment of the, of the individual, of the individual landowner is subject to the, a kind of draconian regulation that should be applied to perhaps corporations, but not to personal, not to private landowners, only because we are the t- we are the stewards of this land. We've been here for over fifty years between the builder of our home and, uh, and us, taking care of this land. And in order to do that, we have to be careful of our own nest. We will not foul it. And, uh, this is not to say that the irrational behavior of individuals is not a possibility, but we would not want a neighbor to do the same. We draw the well water from this land. We look after this land. I would, I would implore the commission to partner with, with private landowners and educate us. You are the experts. We are, we know the land, and, uh, to apply these regulations in the same way you would to a, a, a profit-making enterprise that is faceless and not part of this discussion here as a town meeting is, I think, wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rosenthal.
Mr. Moderator. The state, uh, has passed a wetlands bylaw which basically protects, uh, the, the wetlands. Middleborough has a Water Resource Protection District bylaw which protects of our groundwater. Isn't it a great thing that the state will allow us to regulate ourselves beyond what the state deems necessary in this particular case? Well, Middleborough's a very large town. It's forty-five percent wetlands, and to a large degree, it's undeveloped. And so if we pass these, uh, uh, additional, uh, limitations on what we can do on our property, uh, the town never will build out the way it really should. Uh, the state would be happy with that because they'd love to see most of the, uh, development in the cities where the infrastructure already exists. Uh, they've made it very clear to us that as far as land use goes, uh, that they're not particularly happy with Middleborough growing any larger than it is. Now, a lot of the communities in two-hundred and some communities, two-hundred and one, whatever it is, have passed the Home Rule Conservation Bylaw, but the large proportion of those are communities that are already totally built out and are wealthy communities. Uh, fundamentally, uh, if the CONCOM, the Conservation Commission needs to be able to levy fees or come up with a different way to fund itself, I think that it would be appropriate for it to present a bylaw to that effect, but, uh, this would give it excessive, uh, basically discretion. And it would take away people's real right to appeal. Now, currently, if the Conservation Commission comes up with some ruling that, uh, the individual feels is, is unwieldy or basically wrong, they can appeal to the Department of Environmental Protection, the DEP, who has experts on staff who know this bylaw intimately, and either they'll go along with the Conservation Commission or they'll, uh, basically put out what's called a superseding order. Uh, if we pass this Home Rule bylaw, that will be completely gone. There'll no longer be an appeal to DEP. You'll have to go to Superior Court. Uh, God knows how long it'll take, spend anywhere from twenty-five to a hundred thousand dollars, and possibly be before a judge who doesn't have a clue what anyone is talking about. So you'd have to hire experts and, and all that type of thing. Uh, what this would do is, is make the Conservation Commission, relatively speaking, unchallengeable. Now, I understand that, that, uh, the Conservation Commissions and most boards want control. They want as much control as they can get. Several years ago, this, when they wanted a, a Home Rule bylaw, the issue was about a twenty-foot, five-foot no-touch zone, which was the most important thing to them at that time, and we gave them that, the Water Resource Protection District bylaw. So now, there's, there's a need to protect, uh, sinkholes and hard-bottom puddles and, uh, infernal pools and all that type of thing. And while some of these are legitimate and some of them are certifiable, uh, that, uh, this type of, of control and this type of, uh, power is inconsistent with ownership of private property and, and people's ability to use and, uh, develop their property. And, uh, I hope that this body, uh, votes against this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Andrews.
Mr. Moderator, Lincoln Andrews. Uh, every law that's created should be viewed in the eye of how it may be interpret, interpreted twenty-five years from now, not in terms of the way it's constructed at present. It appears to me that this law was constructed and it was not vetted properly with people that may have, uh, differing opinions to it to, to clean up some, some of the issues that are, are presented with it. Never once did I see the, did I personally see the Conservation Commission come before the Board of Selectmen and make their presentation to the town and just as, just as the police, um, the police, uh, have in the Green School Committee, for example. And I am worried about some certain things in this bylaw because it has not been vetted. We have some definitions here, and so it says changing temperature in any body of water. Well, who's going to define that and how, and how do you define that? Who's going to be left to define it? Are there already laws by the government on that? It says, uh, placing fill or removal of material which would, which would alter elevation and dumping, discharging, or filling any material which may degrade water quality. So if you live alongside of an area, if you dump grass, you know, you, you are potentially suspect. The present Conservation Commission may say, no, 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 we're not going to do that. I'm not worried about the present Conservation Commission. I'm worried about the one that's here fifteen years from now. And then there's another one that says, uh, about, uh, cutting a tree. If you cut a tree down, you could be, you could be held liable. So my question is, first of all, it's not even a question, it's just a statement, are there laws that cover all of this by the E, by the EPA and the local DEP? The answer is yes. We also have a very strong WRPD, Water Re, Water Resource Protection District bylaw. And three, this has not been brought to the town of Middleborough in a very methodical fashion so that the people of the town can make a decision upon something which is going to truly affect their property values going forward and their potential of being brought before Superior Court. Thank you.
Thank you. Down front here, I believe, was next in line.
This is the article I've been waiting on all night.
Okay.
I've had this happen to me, and I know on a Board of Selectmen, you have two people for it, and it's, uh, three against it.
That's correct.
And I'm definitely against it because this person that is the Conservation Commission has given five items on her own to these people back, and it's wrong. So I say we vote it down.
Okay. Thank you.
I want to count on it, not just up and down.
Okay, well, I'll make that, I'll make that decision. Okay, well, I'll make that, I'll make that decision.
That's what I asked, the question before.
Okay. I'm sorry, Mr. Mosley?
Yes. The bylaw has more restrictions than ever. If, at the present time, if the Conservation Commission, if you have anything to discuss with the Conservation Commission, if you don't like their ruling, you can go to the EPA, the state. But if you have a bylaw, you give all that up. And if they, if they come out in a, just about mandate that you do something, the only, the only way, the only, your only recourse would be to go to court. You have to be around there. Then it would put the price of your property down. A voter would come up and say, well, given the situation you're in, the value's gone down. Then some big money boy comes along, they buy it for next to nothing, and in a few years down the road, they change the rules. So in other words, it's, the way this country's going, it's, the middle class are just about, they're just about gone along with your freedoms.
Okay, thank you. I've got one more speaker down here, and then we're going to move the question. Go ahead.
Adam Carbone, Marion Road. First off, I'd like to say, you know, I fully, fully support a lot of the efforts that the Conservation Commission and the Conservation Agent put forth in trying to construct a bylaw to help us as a town to protect our resources and things like that. And for the most part, most of the, most of the items in the bylaw, I would support. Fees, things like that. I understand how it is to try to run some of these boards and, like we said, keep some of the clerical stuff in order and things like that. The biggest problem as a property owner myself and someone that's done development and things like that is this drastically changes the way that an individual can interact with the board, okay? They make a decision, there's a defined, there's a defined process right now that you can appeal to the state. And you know what? You can do that in a cost-effective manner, okay? This drastically changes the way that you have to interact and appeal by forcing you to hire an attorney that has inherent fees and take it to Superior Court. And anybody that's gone through that process, they've thrown out some terms and costs and things like that. It's not an inexpensive process. And it drastically puts an owner's burden on the person trying to do an appeal, which I think would deter a lot of individuals from taking that next step, which could drastically decrease the value of their property.
Thank you, Mr. Carbone. With that, you want to, have you got anything else to say?
I do. So I'd just like to respond to some of these comments. I mean, this is not about restricting individual landowners' rights. This is about creating and protecting, this is about protecting our natural resources. Granted, second-largest land town with a landmass in the state, a lot of resources that we need to protect. The more diverse resources we have, such as infernal pools, isolated wetlands, the more diverse our natural habitats are and the better protection we have for our water resource areas, our wellhead protection areas that we just changed in our zoning laws a couple votes ago. This is about creating better projects from large subdivisions or commercial projects that come into town, asking people who are using and working within our resource area buffers to create better projects, to create projects that are a little more respectful to our natural resources. And in addition, we currently have a large project or a project that's under a superfund through DEP where we've had town, town groups come to the commission and say, help us with this project. And we have not been able to help them with the project as far as getting answers from DEP, as far as moving the cleanup process along. Our hands are tied. People say the Wetland Protection Act is sufficient in certain projects such as these, and this is Rockland Industries I'm talking about. We are, our hands are tied. We are not able to push DEP. We are not able to push the owner to clean up, and so we have to wait. And we've been waiting for years, and I know that people in this community have been asking the Conservation Commission for action, and we have not been able to provide them action. And so our hope is that with this bylaw, that we can also, that we're able to prod DEP. And I know people are concerned that perhaps a project goes into, into appeal, that you're going to adjudicatory hearing. But, you know, our, the thought is not to have individual property owners go to adjudicatory hearing. That's the last thing that we want to do. We hope to work with everyone involved. Again, this is about presenting a project or presenting an ideal that is, that works with the resources, that promotes development, that does not stifle the individual rights of the landowner. Of course, everyone wants to go to DEP because what DEP does is they send it right back to the Conservation Commission and they say, deal with it. Because DEP is stretched thin, they're not able to handle all of these unless it's a huge violation. Most of the appeals to DEP comes back to the Conservation Commission, and they ask us to deal with it. And so with this adjudicatory hearing, the thought is that it would allow the applicant and the Conservation Commission to promote a better project and not to go into that hearing, which is, I don't think anyone wants to go into unless absolutely necessary. I will say that there, that the bylaws have, do not reduce property, the value of properties. We can look at towns such as Marshfield and Mansfield and the town of Concord, you know, up and down, those are towns that have high property values, that respect their natural resources. I will say, I will use a recent project that's in Mansfield. The town wants to, needs to do work on their airport, that's along 495. If the town of Mansfield did not have a local bylaw, the airport would have been allowed to clear seven acres of forest within a wetland. But because the town of Mansfield has a local bylaw, they're able to work with the airport, and they're, and they're starting to come, well, they haven't done it yet, but the idea is to come up with a better project that promotes not only the airport but also the abutters and the town and the natural resources that are there. So it's not, it's not black and white. We're not trying to restrict people. We're not trying to restrict growth in the town. We're trying to have people work together with the Conservation Commission, understand that these are natural resources that we need to protect. A few more things, the gentleman that said, you know, if you throw grass clippings into the resources, then you're, you're going to be in trouble. Well, everyone likes the Nemasket River. Everyone likes the herring. If we start throwing grass clippings in the Nemasket River to, in such a way that we start to foul the water and we don't have the herring, there's nothing that we can do other than say, you know, stop, please stop, or come to the Board of Selectmen to mitigate that. So there seems to be a lot of black and white. There seems to be a lot of, I guess, posturing about this. It's not that intent. We're trying, again, to create projects that promote growth but also respect our natural resources. And if you want to just flip through this quickly, please, Tricia, because I, we had a lot of, we had a lot of work. If I may, please, just a few more minutes, and we'll just quickly scroll through these and if people can read them.
Can I make a quick comment to that, please? Just that...
I'm gonna, I'm gonna move the question. I think, I understand what's happening. I think I feel what's going on in the room. You've already had an opportunity to speak. You've had an opportunity to speak.
Thank you, I appreciate the opportunity.
Okay. This article requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed signify by saying nay.
Nay.
The motion does not carry.
We'll see you at next town meeting.
Okay. Article 29.
Mr. Chair. No, I'm sorry, Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Nolton.
I move to postpone this article indefinitely.
Second? I have a motion and a second to postpone indefinitely Article 29. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed signify by saying nay. I'll entertain a motion at this point in time to dissolve our annual town meeting.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. We'll see you in the fall.